Okay, it lasted six o'clock. I'll follow the October 8th meeting of county order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call shows we have 20 supervisors present. Item four is approval of the agenda.
Omar moves. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Okay. Okay, we'll call the vote. Item five, members of the public wishing to be heard. Ben Peterson.
So you won't be able to speak at the item. You can only speak during this section.
Oh. I don't really have anything to say. There was any questions?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You can go ask them and then if we remember them, we'll get answers. Does that make sense?
I just asked a little question.
Okay.
Okay, so when we're on to item six, the consent agenda. Entertainer motion to approve.
Waiter, so moves.
Pressure on seconds.
So you have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on any of these items?
Well, can I ask, when there's all these rezones, they're just automatically, when we say we vote yes, they're automatically done or are they done already?
They are not done until you vote on them.
Oh, okay, but we don't talk about them?
Well, you can, that's why I asked for questions.
Oh, okay.
There's a number of options. One option is we can approve what's there minus one of them and then say that to discuss. If you'd like, you take one out and discuss it. If you'd like to discuss one, you can make a motion to discuss one of the items. Or we can discuss them.
I didn't know. Does anybody ever complain about these rezones? Oh, okay. During this section or?
So if, yeah, we have a motion on the floor to approve, so, and it's been seconded. So if you, we have a second, yeah. So if you'd like to discuss one of these, you can make a motion to just pull one of these out for discussion.
No, I was just asking questions about that section.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just letting you what the procedure would be as well if you wanted to.
Okay.
Okay. So any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the vote then. The consent agenda is approved. Item seven are reports. County administrator review and update, proposed budget update for 2025.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. My name's Randy Schultz. I'm the county administrator. On October 1st, I presented the 2025 proposed budget to the executive committee. So the next step for the budget process, especially for the new members, is to publish the budget. County board and the public will have time to review it over the next month. Then on Thursday, November 7th, is the budget hearing. So I'll come up and present the full budget. That's part, the public will first give their input. I'll present the budget. And then when we move forward to approve the budget, then that's when you can make any changes you want to the budget and ask questions and do all that, all that fun stuff. So, but keep in mind that if, excuse me, if changes are proposed, they have to result in the balanced budget, which means if you're gonna take and move money from somewhere, you have to tell us where you're gonna do that and how you're gonna do that, because we always have to have a balanced budget. To review the budget, you can take a look at the October 1st, 2024 executive committee agenda. And unfortunately, when we put stuff on IQM2, it does have a watermark on it. So we came up with a way showing you how you can look at that without that watermark. It's kind of hard to kind of look at it, but, so go to the actual packet and then you can scroll through there. If you need the budget, Lori has one in her office. You want to review it, look at it that way, you can do that. And then again, if there's any questions, please talk to me or Lori. And then before the budget, so if there's something you guys want to do, we can talk about that and explain how things have to be done and how they have to balance, where money comes from and all that good stuff. It's never as easy as everybody thinks it is sometimes. So, so that's really the process. Again, if you have any questions, please reach out to us. Any questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item B are department reports, election update.
All right, so I gave this presentation earlier today to our department heads and there was questions as we went through it. And I find that that works better than if you wait until the very end, which you can wait till the very end if you have questions. But if you have a question on a slide, please feel free to ask me during that time so we don't have to try to find where it is to go back and that can kind of help a little with the discussion. So, for most of you, I think you know our department. I've been with the county seven years. Lisa, who is on the right, has been with the county 34 years. And Amanda has been with the county for 14 years. And then as we look at 2024, we had an election in February. That was the spring primary. We had the presidential preference and the spring election in April. We also had the partisan primary in August. And then of course, looking forward, we have the general election, which is exactly one month from today, on Tuesday, November 5th. And then right after that, we have elections in February and April. So if you do the math, that's six elections in 14 months. So, but we, as I explained to you at an earlier board meeting, we do prepare for the elections all year. And this year, my goal has really been education and training, whether it's for myself or the public or our election workers. So I'm just gonna kind of go through what some of that looked like this year. Training that I conducted, I conducted training, and that should not say partisan primary, that should say presidential preference. So that election training was conducted here at the courthouse, March 18th and 20th. We did two three-hour sessions. And for that one, we had about 50 attendees and we only invited the municipal clerks and their chief election inspectors. We did not open that training up to all the election workers. Then in the summer, myself with the Dane County clerk, we presented to all the county clerks at the summer conference, a presentation on how to conduct the Board of Canvas, and then also training for election workers for the partisan primary. Then in July, we, based on some things that happened in April, I felt we were missing some of the basic information. I feel like sometimes maybe the training I was giving the clerks or the chief inspectors wasn't always getting down to all of the election workers. So we did what I call the back-to-basics election training. We conducted four sessions throughout the county. You can see the dates and the location there. We had 160 attendees. And again, that was municipal clerks, chief election inspectors, and election inspectors. Please note though, the city of Chippewa Falls did not send any of their election workers, which is roughly usually about 100 election workers. So this is everyone but the city of Chippewa Falls. The training was three hours of election training and then an hour of Narcan training that was conducted by Joanna and Tabitha from our public health department. That started out as a theory on what to do if someone was exposed to something at a polling location, but that training turned into so much more about just how Narcan can be used in general for the public. And a lot of the election workers were walking away with boxes of Narcan because they, I own a golf course or I own a bar, and so they were taking it to be used other places. So I think that was a really neat partnership that we had this year. Then we have two trainings coming up here. I'm doing training on Monday here at the courthouse, two sessions, a morning and an afternoon, titled Preparing for the November Election. As of October 1st, which was the deadline, to register, we had 64 people. As of this afternoon, because I just got another one, I have 100 people registered now for that training. And again, that would not include any election workers for the city of Chippewa Falls. She's doing three of her own trainings coming up. And then because apparently the county clerk in Crawford County enjoys my back-to-the-basics election training, she has asked that I come down and train her poll workers. So I'll be going down there October 23rd and training about 100 of their election workers And then for a fun note, we also did, or I did, election presentations and mock voting at Chippewa Falls High School, McDonald High School, and the Cornell Elementary School. And the Cornell Elementary School was a heated race for their fourth and fifth grade student council. And my daughter may or may not have won one of those seats, so. And the election was not rigged. Training that I attended, so I do always try to attend our county clerk conferences so that, there was the summer conference, which was in June. One of the main courses there or sections that we had was from University of Minnesota called the Purcell Case. And that is a legal case that basically says that you can't change the process for elections or election law if it's too close to an election. For those of you that heard me speak before, this is one of my hugest pet peeves, is we cannot change things close to an election. If you want to change something, fine, it needs to start with the next election cycle. So I love that case and I wish people would pay attention to it. We had a election director from Shasta County, California. She spoke on hand count requests and its implications. The elections group did a tabletop exercise on election security. That was a very interesting presentation, but scary as well. Two of the ladies were from Michigan and they were similar positions as mine, but in Michigan in 2020. And due to stuff that happened during the election, they received election threats. They played the voicemails and the threats that they received. They no longer are in their roles, but now they're training others on how to be safe and kind of teaching about their experience. Wisconsin Ethics Commission is usually about campaign finance. We had Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, which again is all about election security, more so on the cyber side. And then the Elections Commission updates us usually on any litigation. Then in August, I went over to Wausau and participated in a national election exercise called Tabletop the Vote. That was again coordinated by CISA. So again, it's a lot of election security. What was very interesting about that training is, you can see there, all military branches, the room that was in Virginia, I mean, they were, I can't remember their names, but it was like Brigade General so-and-so. We had top people from the USPS. I was sitting next to two FBI agents, which is a little unnerving when you're sitting by two FBI agents all day. So, but it was a good event and it was very interesting. Then also the fall conference we just had, which was the same time as the Wisconsin Counties Association, our organization meets during that conference. We had again more election security training. We had a presentation with Keep Our Republic on Media Relations. And then again, the Elections Commission updated us on different litigation. And then I, our organization has a contract partnership with University of Minnesota, and those are a couple election-related online courses that I completed. Again, a lot of election security, crisis management type things as we look mostly to November, but for any election really. So as we look to November, I want to go through a timeline with you because I find it interesting. So the timeline for November, August 27th at 6:40, I put the time there because you're like, why? Well, because that's when the Elections Commission emailed us the certification for the presidential and vice presidential candidates. Most of us are not sitting at our desk at 6:40 to get that information to do anything with it. So really, it's not till the 28th that we really see that information. So which meant that we could do the equipment programming and create the ballots that last week of August. We were able to send our ballot order over to the printer on August 29th. September 12th is when the ballots were delivered to us here. And then we started distributing them to the municipal clerks between September 12th and the 18th. And then any absentee ballot requests that were on file prior to that were to be mailed out by the 18th or 19th. And so they started going out September 12th. So everything that we did was either done before or on the statutory deadlines. What I like to point out is that there was a lawsuit that was filed on August 23rd for one of the presidential candidates to have his name removed from the ballot. The Supreme Court did have a ruling on September 27th, is that what it is? September 27th. So again, if you look at the date there, September 27th, the Supreme Court said, nope, we can't do an injunction, sends it back to the appeals court. So now it's still pending to have his name removed off the ballots that are already printed, mailed out. And they are not expecting that court case to be final until after the November election. So, you're supposed to do what? Some counties did not print their ballots like we did and waited and waited. And so then they could have been or were behind statutory deadlines to get that stuff done. I did not wait. For the November election, and again, this information is as of October 1st, we here in Chippewa County have just under 39,000 registered voters. We did order ballots for 125% of registered voters. We anticipate high voter turnout, obviously, for this election. I never want to be caught where we are short ballots at any of our locations and then we're having to get them ballots same day. So we try to plan ahead. For Chippewa County for this election, we have 15 ballot styles, which is not terrible for the April election. As I think I've told you before, we usually have over 100 ballot styles. The reason why we have 15 for this particular election is because the county is in five different assembly districts. So with the different combinations, we would have those. And then several municipalities are renting extra tabulators for the anticipated voter turnout to avoid lines or so that way they can keep up with running the absentee ballots during the day, so we don't have to wait until after polls close to run those absentee ballots. So, how do you come into this? The next part is common questions. These are questions that I get asked, some of them daily, but these are questions that you maybe could get asked, being on the board, just being in the public. So I thought it might be helpful for you to have some of these answers to questions. So the first one is what type of election equipment does Chippewa County use? We use what is called Clear Ballot Equipment. We purchased, the county purchased it in 2019, at the end of 2019, and we first used it in February of 2020. There lists the different pieces of that equipment. The Clear Cast is the tabulator, that's the machine where you put your ballot in. Clear Access is the ADA compliant machine. Then Clear Design is the software that we use for creating the ballots and programming the machine. And then Clear Count is the system that we use after the election to upload all of our ballot images into. None of the equipment, including the tabulators, the computers, are connected to the internet. We also don't have modem capabilities. We're old school for results. The poll workers or that the polling locations have to call us with the results on election night. They don't modem any results to us. And aside from those municipalities, all the equipment is stored here at the county. And those locations have signed agreements with us that only three people will have access to wherever that equipment is locked up. And they had to show pictures of the locks and the closets and wherever they are, for approval. So can we trust the election equipment? The short answer is yes. The long answer is audits that we've done in 2020, 2022, and 2024 have confirmed the totals from the equipment matched the hand count audits. The public tests that we have conducted before each election have been fine. And we do the public test for the 22 municipalities that we store the equipment for, which is 54 pieces of equipment plus 22 printers. The public test is open to the public. We actually had a member of the public here in August come to the public test, but he was from Pepin County. And then the Board of Canvas is conducted.
So in the event, absentee ballots, I don't understand them.
Yep.
How do you count them and how do you have a second absentee?
So, we're gonna hold that thought because one of my next slides is gonna go through that for you. And then yes, we have, just so you guys are aware too, Supervisor Gearing, Supervisor Erickson, both are poll workers too. So if you have other questions outside of this too, they're good resources too. All right. So the Board of Canvas is where we reconcile the vote totals and the voter numbers and the poll book signatures, and that's done after the election. And again, that just reiterates the information that was on Election Day. It's usually a week after the election. So, who can vote in Chippewa County? So you have to, to legally vote in Chippewa County or in Wisconsin in general, you have to be a US citizen, 18 years or older on Election Day. Some states do let you vote. If you were gonna be 18 by the general election in November, you would have been able to vote in the primary. Wisconsin does not allow that. You must be a resident of Wisconsin for at least 28 days, except for a presidential election. If you move to Wisconsin or to Chippewa County within that 28 days, you can get a president-only ballot, and we do have those at all the polling locations too. You must be registered to vote before the election day, or you can register on Election Day. And then something to note is people that are convicted of felonies are not qualified to vote until they have completed their term of imprisonment or otherwise satisfied their sentence. So just because someone has committed a felony does not mean they lose their right to vote forever. So once they satisfy their sentence, they are allowed to vote again. All right, so I think some of your stuff is gonna come in here. So how do we know that someone isn't voting twice? So we obviously checks and balances always. But for absentee voting, what happens is all the dates are tracked. So if a voter requests an absentee ballot, the date that it was requested is recorded by the municipal clerk, it's sent to us, and we put it in the state voter registration system. When the ballot then is actually mailed out to them, the date it was issued, that date gets entered into all of those locations. And then the date the ballot is returned to the clerk, the day the clerk gets it, whether it's in the mail or in person, that date is recorded. If someone is issued or requests an absentee ballot, or they return it, that is identified also in the paper poll book. So on Election Day, when, if someone comes in that was given an absentee ballot, or they returned an absentee ballot, but they arrive in person and try to vote, it says that by their name, where they normally would sign, it says absentee issued, absentee returned. So in that way, the poll worker would say, I'm sorry, you cannot vote, you were already given a ballot, or you already returned a ballot. This happens, I don't want to say frequently, it does happen in November because the ballots were mailed out, right? Some of them were mailed out September 12th. That's almost two months before an election. Sometimes people forget, we see this sometimes with older population, and they may show up because they don't remember that they actually voted. And then the, like I said, the poll book, but then the absentee certificate envelopes, those also must have signature of voter witness. Those are checked by the clerk when they are returned, and then they are also checked on Election Day by the election workers. So Supervisor Kelly, more questions on absentee?
How does, like down in Madison, right, they had, the city clerk had 2,000 extra ballots printed. How do you prevent those extra ballots being?
So they didn't have 2,000 extra printed. I'm not sure exactly what they did. They somehow double mailed 2,000 ballots. So my guess is someone either did not save, like we use logs, right, like spreadsheets. So I'm assuming someone did not save their spreadsheet where it said that they were issued and then went into that spreadsheet and then reissued them. I don't know. I cannot speak to that. That is a giant mess, right? The thing is, is that nobody is gonna be able to return two ballots, right? So because they're only gonna have one envelope, if they bring that ballot in, it gets marked. Either they bring that ballot into the clerk, they're gonna have to fill out a new envelope anyway, it gets sealed up, even if they have that extra ballot, they can't bring it back to the clerk. The clerk's gonna go, you already returned it, we already have that recorded. If they were to try to bring it on Election Day, they're gonna see that documented in their poll book as well. Nope, you already returned it. So there should be the checks and balances there. That mistake in general irritates the crap out of me, right? I'm not gonna lie. I have been saying this for the entire year. We cannot make mistakes. We are human. Humans make mistakes. So I understand that's gonna happen. But when we're talking about this election and we know that all eyes are on us right now, how does that happen? It's not okay. It's not okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. And sometimes I sound mean and I'm not really.
It's called passion.
So if somebody was married, mailed an absentee ballot and they didn't mail it back, can they go into the poll?
Yes and no. They have to take that with them or because to show that they didn't mail it. If they never got it, let's say you request an absentee ballot, it never came in the mail to you, you need to let your clerk know right away, and then they can either reissue you one, or you could vote then in person with your clerk. But if you did your absentee ballot, you put it in the mail, it was mailed back to the clerk and the clerk never gets it, you don't get to vote again because you already voted.
Okay, so we talked about elderly people. If they set the thing aside and come Election Day, they're going like, where'd you put that, George? You know, okay, head down, we'll go down there. Oh.
They would, because they did not return it, they would be allowed to vote that day. But if at any point in that conversation, they said, I mailed it back to you, then they would not be able to vote. Because the problem is, they mailed it, let's say, the day after the election, it comes back to the clerk, we let them vote on Election Day, and now I have this ballot here that they filled out, the district attorney has called them, they're getting prosecuted for election fraud. They voted twice.
Doing the validation stuff, we'd have people say, who they, they never vote absentee, but when they get there, it shows that they already voted. What recourse do they have?
I, that has never happened that I am aware of, because no one has ever brought that to my attention, no one has brought it to the clerk's attention. So if that's happening somewhere.
Is that a, that's a local area, correct? It wouldn't be a county issue, correct?
It could be a county, because we, so we're a provider for most of municipalities in the county. So poll books that are printed, everything that's entered in the state voter registration system, that comes through us. The municipal clerks are not doing that.
Okay. So if they get, you know, snubbed by the municipal, the local, they can come to you?
Yep. And if ever, and not that, because I think we have a really great group of municipal clerks as well, but if ever anyone is not satisfied with an answer that they're getting from their local clerk, or to be fair, if they can't even get ahold of their local clerk, because again, most of our local clerks, this is not their full-time job, right? They're working full-time other jobs, and this is supposed to be a side job that most of them are probably tricked into doing anyway. They were told a few hours, you pay a few bills, it's not a big deal. I had one clerk that emailed me two weeks ago and she said, is every election like this? Because I don't think she's gonna be back. I'm hoping she finishes through November, because otherwise, then I gotta do it. So, it's hard. And we're the only state that runs everything at the local level for elections. Everything else is at either the county or state level. All right. So then on Election Day, how do we know someone isn't voting twice? Again, we really Again, we really are looking at that poll book. But what happens is, you come in, you go to the poll book, you sign your name, and then they put a little number by your name. Chippewa County is one of the few counties I know that we use stickers instead of handwriting, because stickers I can read, handwriting I can't always read. Handwriting, too, people get off what number they are. So the stickers, we tend to stay in order a lot better. So then, they will check periodically throughout the day and absolutely at night. The first two things, they can't check the physical number until the end of the night. But they look, okay, the poll book says we have 202 voters. They go to the machine, the machine has a little thing on there, and it says there are 202 ballots. So we know we're right on. The number of voters is matching the number of ballots. At the end of the night, we add a third piece to that, the poll book number, the machine number, and then we physically take the ballots out of the machine and we hand count the number of ballots. All three of those numbers must match. And then after the election, of course, like I said before, we have the Board of Canvas certifying the election. We also enter in all the voter participation in the state system. And that's where, if some of you ever go out on the MyVote website, you can see, like, you voted in this election and this election. We enter that information from the poll books. And then also, the election reconciliation, that's where we're taking all of that information, all of those pieces, and entering it in the state system, making sure everything lines up.
So the voter participation on the MyVote, that takes nine, 10 days?
It can.
Right? Because I've had people, two days after election, I voted.
Yep, we've had people call the same day, I voted this morning, it's not saying I voted. Okay. First, you would be really irritated if I, if your voter participation showed up that fast, right? Because then things are connected, and we don't want them connected. So by statute, we have 30 days to get that information entered into the system. Honestly, and I haven't even hardly done it in the last, I don't know how many elections, Amanda and Lisa have been getting that done in almost less than a week. They're getting it done in a few days, they're just getting it. And basically, that process is you take the poll book from town of Anson, and you look at every single page, this person, you look them up in the system, yep, they voted, this person, yep, they voted, this person, yep. It's a very manual process. Yep. I know WEC does put a thing on top of the webpage now that says, it may take up to 30 days for you to see your participation. So hopefully people stop asking, but yeah. All right. Let's just, again, reminding that the number of voters needs to match the number of ballots. So how does Chippewa County ensure, yes, Karen?
I'm sorry, I want to go back to absentee ballots.
Yep.
When are they put through a machine? When, when they're received or on the day of?
No.
Or who does it?
So they are done on Election Day. So when the absentee ballots are coming back, right, right now they're being mailed back to the clerks, the clerks are checking those envelopes, they are not opening them, they're staying sealed, they're being put in a secure drawer, box, safe, whatever, they're being secured. And then the clerk takes them to the polling location on Election Day, and then the election workers then mark them off in the poll book, give them a number, because those numbers get counted too. They open up those envelopes, and then that's when they're fed through the machine.
Okay, thanks.
So, back to the dead people. This is, I don't know if this is a fun part of my job, I'm not sure. But we check the obituaries daily, and then the municipal clerks are checking the obituaries as well. We also get notifications from Wisconsin Department of Health Services, Social Security Administration, and then the Electronic Registration Information Center, which is the interstate database. We've gotten letters from Texas, Florida, saying, this person was at one point registered with you, either now they've registered with us, or they have passed away. So we get those notifications. So then, what happens to an absentee ballot if it is mailed back to us and the voter dies before the election? So that ballot then is rejected, and the votes are not counted. So the clerk will mark the envelope that the voter has passed away, it's sent to the polling location, then the polling location has to reject that ballot because that person is not alive on Election Day. Bizarrely, for some reason, we had like 13 of them in August, it was the highest number I've seen. So I'm not sure what was going on in August, but people were not making it to Election Some of you are aware of this case, but in 2020, we did prosecute the case of an 89-year-old man who requested an absentee ballot for his deceased wife. He said he wanted to do this one last thing for her. He knew how she wanted to vote, so he put in the request. The clerk got the request, and the clerk said, um, she is dead, and then contacted us. We contacted the Sheriff's Department and the local law enforcement agency and the district attorney. He was then prosecuted. He admitted to it, and his handwriting would have matched anyway, but he was prosecuted then for that. So the checks and balances do work. So are municipalities in Chippewa County using drop boxes? So the answer to that is yes and no. Per Wisconsin Supreme Court, it is up to the municipal clerk whether or not to use a Dropbox. And I think this is pretty fitting, right, for where we're at as state, county, or country. 14 of the municipalities are using a Dropbox, 14 are not, and four don't want to talk to me about it apparently. So. So we're at.
Is there a list where those are at and how people access them?
So I have a list on what I have. I think most of the municipalities that are using a Dropbox, when they sent out their absentee ballots, they have a letter that goes with it, and they included ways to return it, and they had that listed. So the drop boxes do have to be secure, and only the voter is allowed to put the ballot in the Dropbox. Same with, if you have an absentee ballot, only you, the voter, are supposed to put it in the mail. Even if my husband and I are both voting absentee, I am not to take his ballot envelope and put it in the mail. I cannot take his ballot and mine and put it in the Dropbox. We would each have to walk up there and put ours in.
By the law, they have to have those video cameras?
No.
That's no longer the case anymore?
They do not have to have a video camera, or a security camera on it.
Really?
That is not a requirement.
I understand you.
A lot of them do have cameras on them because, as you'll see here, some of them have security cameras, but also, a lot of the boxes are also the same boxes that they're collecting utility payments in or tax payments. So if people are putting money into a Dropbox, they sure as heck are secure enough right for your ballot. But yeah, a lot of them have the cameras, big lights on them. So how does Chippewa County make sure only U.S. citizens are voting? So we do have multiple safeguards in place to prevent non-citizens from voting. Elections Commission does check driver's license and state ID cards. The voters must check the U.S. citizen box on the registration form. If they check, they are not a U.S. citizen, it is election fraud. Wisconsin is a, at this time, a self-certification state, so you are certifying yourself as a citizen. If you don't like that, talk to your legislators. People in the U.S. illegally cannot receive a driver's license. People in the country legally that are non-citizens can get a driver's license, but it looks different, may say that they aren't, but the biggest change or the difference is that the expiration date is not their birth date. If you looked at my driver's license, the expiration date is my birth date. Non-citizens, the birthday, or the expiration date is not their birthday. If someone is a non-citizen, and they are hoping at some point to become a citizen, if they vote or attempt to vote, they will be deported, and they will never be given the chance to be a U.S. citizen. So the threat to them to do that is way too great for them to want to vote and mess that up on that. And then, how can you guys be involved? You can either attend our public test, watch it on Facebook, same with our Board of Canvas, you could be an election inspector. It may or may not be too late for November. The city of Chippewa Falls is doing a new poll worker training the last Saturday in October, so that's probably the only municipality that is still looking for election workers at this time. Most of the other municipalities require that you have worked a previous election before you will work a November election. The other one is you could be an election observer, anyone can do that. And then ask the experts, which would be right here, and stop believing everything you see on the internet. So, we're almost done, I promise. Misused words or phrases, early voting. Wisconsin does not have early voting. We have absentee voting, which can be done in person or by mail. Early voting means the voter completes a ballot, they put it in the tabulator. That's before Election Day. So if we had early voting, if you went in to do in-person voting before Election Day, like you can now, but it gets put in an envelope right now, you would actually put it in the tabulator yourself, your vote is already counted. None of the absentee ballots are counted until Election Day. And then the other one is electronic voting. We do not have any electronic voting in Wisconsin. You may see machines, right? You see the tabulator, that's just counting the ballots. Then we have the ADA compliant, the touchscreen, but that's to help people that need assistance, and that still prints out a paper ballot. So every single vote in Wisconsin has a paper ballot tied to it. So nothing is stored electronically, everything is a paper ballot. Any more questions?
Yeah, just a question, because some people have been asking me that are younger voters or new to this area, so you said they can register the day of?
Yes, which is different than most places.
Most places, yep. And that's just an ID and a mail, do they got to bring something that shows?
So it depends, they have to have proof of residence and proof of identity. So if you have a Wisconsin driver's license with the correct address on it, that can count for both, because it has your residence on it and your face. But if your driver's license does not have the correct address on it, like physically on it, because now if you move, you go online on the DMV, they don't always send you a new driver's license, it has your old address on it, then you would need to bring in a utility bill, property tax statement, lease, rental agreement, something like that to go with it.
Yeah, okay, that answers my next question then. Yeah, so it's pretty basic on that. And if they want to register prior, they can do that with any of their clerks and any of their employees?
Yep. So they can do that with their clerks, they can do it online. We will do registrations at our office, except for the city of Chippewa Falls, we will send them to the city clerk, since she's there same time we are.
Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Gearing, did you have a question?
Yes.
My computers.
As a chief inspector, I'd like to address this absentee ballots just a little further. First of all, when they come in, processed through the clerk, they're verifying the signatures, the date, they come to the polling station, they're open, they have to go through the ballot clerk, and there's two of them. So it's not just one that's looking at them, there's two that is verifying them. But the point I want to make mostly is, at some point, they have to be fed in the tabulator? That's not ballot stuffing. I get that question a lot, because I'm the one that does that at our polling station. So when I'm feeding these ballots in, it's absentee ballots that are getting fed, not, I'm not stuffing the ballot box.
So what we have encouraged all of our locations to do is, obviously first, you have to announce that we're running absentee ballots, so whoever's in the building hears you say that. But obviously, it's a busy day, right? People are coming in and out. We, a lot of our clerks now either have signs up, or they're having vests or signs that the election workers are wearing that says, processing absentees, or it's on their back, because again, if they're standing this way feeding ballots in, it says it on the back. What I tell all of them, and Pete's been at some of our training, is that you know what you're doing, the election workers in your building know what you're doing, but the person walking in off the street does not know what you're doing, and they're skeptical, and they need to know what you're doing. We have nothing to hide, so we just need to make sure that we are always announcing and showing what we are doing.
And one of the duties of a chief inspector is that every half hour, I would have to verify that the number of people voted and the number of ballots that have been fed into the machine are the same. In my opinion, Wisconsin is one of the safest states because everything is checks and balance double-checked. Two people are doing every, every step of the way. You know, there's the ballot book, can't be signed twice, can't be entered twice for voting. So I think Wisconsin is a very, very safe state. The other comment I want to make is, having attended the training by the clerk, she does an excellent job. She knows her job, she knows what she's doing, and she's taught the people that work at the polls in Chippewa County very well. She should be commended.
Any other questions?
I do have one. The website, where you can go in and you can request absentee ballot, you can put anybody's name, new address, they show them this, and one of the clerks got put in jail because of it. That's, that's a weakness in our system. Is there any way you're, you're balancing for that?
So you would have to have name, address, and you have to have birthday. We put that in, and then if they are registered, you can put in for a request of an absentee. But again, if you are doing that for someone else, you are committing election fraud, straight up, straight up. But if you, if that person is not registered, let me back it up. If they are registered, but if the ID has not been on file through the MyVote system, you have to upload a copy of their driver's license. That is a requirement. If you don't have that, it's not going to let you proceed. If the person, again, if they're registering new, then again, you still have to upload that driver's license.
Sure, they're on that, Jackie. So in the poll book, everybody that's registered in that voting area is in that poll book. So you can't just dream up a name and try to put it through, because if they're not in the poll book, if they're not registered, it's not going to happen.
Well, just, I got a copy of, you can buy it, a list of people who voted after the election. I, when I was, everybody was running here, I looked up everybody's name, address, and phone number, so I can contact people, I knew who the new people were coming in here. I can get pretty much everybody's year, birthday, just go on a Google search. So all that stuff is easy to get. So that's, that's what my concern was. I've done voter validating for Chippewa County, and thumbs up to our clerk. I've, I've knocked on doors proving a lot of stuff, her and her team are doing well. These are just my concerns, I've heard, one reason I brought it up, because you brought that other point about, you know, stuffing, that, just one more, if you, you're aware of it, what you, anything you can do about it, you know, things like that.
So again, a lot of the stuff that's out there, right, it falls back on voters or the person, right? We have to have some accountability on that side. Because again, every system you have, there's going to be flaws, there's going to be imperfections. We, we can't control all of it. So some of it then has to get pushed back on, back onto the voter or on whoever's doing it. And again, my question or my response to that too is, if you know someone has done something like that, or you heard someone did something like that, a phone call needs to be made right away. Because either to myself, to the Sheriff's Department, like someone needs to know. I get calls, or I'll get, and I don't even get calls, people will tell me, I'll be at a training or giving a speech somewhere, and someone will say, well, this happened two years ago. Why? Why are you saying it now? Did you tell anyone two years ago when it happened? I can't do anything about something that happened two years ago. Same with on Election Day, if something is happening, you're at a polling location, something seems odd, funny, doesn't seem right, call me. Guess what? That's my job, that's what I do on Election Day. I go from polling location to polling location to make sure everything is fine. And if there's things you don't like about the process, I can't control a lot of it, right? It's all the law. So if there's something you don't like, call your legislators. They're the ones that can make those changes. Anything else? No? No? All right.
Thank you. Okay, on to the next item. We all know the situation that we are, we are in here since April, when HSH St. Joe's closed, and possible ramifications that could come with that. One of the ramifications is, okay, so what happens if we have any kind of a large event? So to get on top of that a bit, I think all of our first responders from various areas, kind of, kind of, as I understand it, we're getting together on September 18th at Chippewa Falls Fire Department for some training and trying to do this. Unbeknownst to them, that very same day, a call came in. And if you remember, that was the call from Bushel and Apec. And I, I can just imagine them seeing at the training at first, wondering whether that's real or not, because they're there for. But as it unfolded, they went out there, and there was called a mass casualty event, because there are, I think, 25 people ended up being transported. And what I've heard, the report I got from the Sheriff's Department that I would like to recognize is that we have multiple agencies, we had the first responders, law enforcement, and, and medical personnel, that all had a massive bunch of people to work together, and they worked. together. And they worked together magnificently. I'd like to recognize all of them for their work and for how they handled that situation. And even further, as far as just what Providence brings you, to understand it, when they were, the ones heading to Mayo, the emergency room is easily overloaded. But they were having a training for doctors at Mayo, and they had an excess number of doctors around. You can bring as many as you want because we have extra doctors here. So just, that cushioned the whole blow of this, but yet what I'd like to recognize is just the fact that a casualty like this happened, we don't have the facilities that we had before, and yet the first responders and everybody worked together, as was told to me from the Sheriff's Department, like we had just planned it, even though we didn't plan it. And so I'd just like to have a recognition for the wonderful job that they did to take care of that situation. And if you followed this, this was even in national news. It made national news when it appeared. And I'd just like to make that recognition. Just appreciate a first responder or anybody that you know for how they take their job seriously and the good jobs they do. On to business items. Number one, Resolution 40-24, resolution to provide a one-time appreciation bonus to employees working in the emergency communication center to cover critical staff shortages.
Resolution 40-24, resolution to provide a one-time appreciation bonus to employees working in the emergency communication center to cover critical staff shortages. Now therefore be it resolved that the county board approves the implementation of the following one-time appreciation bonus structure for 2024. $1,500 bonus for all full-time ECC employees hired before January 1, 2024, and LTE employees who work 650 or more hours in 2024. $750 bonus for LTE employees who work between 125 and 649 hours in 2024, and employees from other departments provided shift assistance. $3, $250 bonus for all ECC employees hired between January 1, 2024, and July 1, 2024, who worked additional shifts. Be it further resolved, the county board approves utilizing one-time funds from the county administrators 2024 budget and/or non-lapsing fund for these efforts. And be it further resolved that the county board expresses its profound appreciation for the personal and professional sacrifices made by all employees forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Entertained some, a motion to approve?
Lynn, so moved.
Last seconds.
You have a motion and a second to approve?
Thanks, Chair. Obviously, you received my letter, and we'll go through that on actually the next resolution. But this came about just because of the shortage. We've had a shortage in this division for quite a while, but it's kind of became critical probably the last six, eight months, somewhere around there. So we've done lots of things, as you see and as you saw in my letter, to try to address this. But this is really the, tell our employees we appreciate it, try to get them through this time, this hump time, and then bring other things to bear so we don't have this issue moving forward. And I just want to express that we appreciate all our employees. The saying and appreciation bonus, I kind of struggled with saying that, and I didn't know what to call it, because we appreciate all our employees. But these employees really did step up in a very tough time, and we appreciate them coming from other divisions, coming from other departments to help out our LTEs. And with all them, it would have been very difficult to obviously keep running and keep operating. Not unique to Chippewa County. We hear this all over the state. I've talked to everybody you can possibly imagine to see if anybody's found the magic bullet. They have not. So we continue to try and implement things and bring things to bear, help reduce the turnover, and bring recruits, recruitment for this. And again, the funding's coming out of my administrator's fund balance, so it won't affect the rest of the budget. Any questions?
No more questions? All right, and I will call on Resolution 40-24. Release. Resolution passed. Item two is Resolution 41-24, resolution to convert one full-time telecommunicator position in the emergency communication center to two part-time communicator positions.
Resolution number 41-24, resolution to convert one full-time telecommunicator position in the emergency communication center to two part-time telecommuter positions. Now therefore be it resolved that effective upon passage of this resolution, the emergency communication center division of the sheriff's office will convert one vacant full-time telecommunicator position into two part-time telecommunicator positions forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Supervisor Gearing, seconds.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to just briefly go through the letter that you all received. Again, we appreciate our employees for what they've done, and all our employees for all the hard work. But as we were talking through this, we kind of wanted to see the history because, you know, we know we've done things, but until you actually put it on paper, it's hard to remember everything we've done. So starting in January of 2020, really, we started trying to do different things, things that we've never done before, LTEs. And then moving through that whole list, on the second page, we did, as you're aware of, the wage study in 2023. The beginning salary grid went up 22.5%. So you can imagine the shape we'd be in if we didn't do that. You know, it's a very tough job. There's nothing easy about it. It's shift work. It's high emotions. It's just a really tough position to fill, obviously. And again, everybody's kind of feeling that same thing. So some of the future plans that we are recommending is a 3% wage increase, and that'd be effective 1125, and that is in the 2025 budget pending the approval of the county board. Hanson recruitment rate, which basically means we'll start the recruitment, instead of starting on the lowest, we'll up that by 3% when we do our advertising. So that hopefully will bring in some additional recruits. Appreciation bonus, we just talked about, you approved that. And then mandatory mental health checks. This is something the sheriff is very passionate about doing, something he wanted to do with all his staff is his plan. And we came up with a way to be able to fund that and kind of run contracts and do all those types of things. It is the one thing that I'd say I got pushback from some county board members about the mandatory part, and I actually pushed kind of hard back on that, too. But the sheriff feels like that is the most appropriate way to move forward. And he's, I've talked to other departments that have done that and have had good results for that. So it's really kind of his call. I did talk to the city. They did that. They did the same thing, City of Chippewa Falls, and man, they had some pushback from their employees. But the chief said that all the employees came back and said they were glad they did it. So it's a, part-time positions pending county board approval. This is that convert one full-time to two part-time. That's the one we're talking about right now. So really, the reason for that, you're going to increase some hours. You're going to go up 1,500 hours for two people, so 3,000 total hours compared to one full-time. It's going to bring some flexibility. We have some LTEs right now that are bumping up against their hours. So we know they want to work some more. One of the things that came up was, well, if we do get fully staffed, is there a possibility to go back to just a full-time position and not have the two part-times? Because they can be hard historically. It's hard to fill part-time LTE positions. But we've actually, you know, been able to do that in this case, in this division of the sheriff's office. So I don't see any issues going back to that. I don't think the board will at the time because it will technically be a cost savings. We did have to put a little more into the department's budget to cover the cost of going to two. But again, we're trying to build in some flexibility and ability to cover shifts. Because at the end of the day, that's really what it comes down to. They have three people every shift, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So it's really about covering shifts. There wasn't, I mean, the flexibility of part-time and bringing people from other departments and all that. I don't know a lot of counties that have done that. So I think that that's been a good thing. So the guaranteed overtime is something we've definitely been talking through, just seeing if, what the compensation would be for that, if we should try and do it for all our employees, or if it's really for this area and the jail. And so we're kind of still working through that. We also want to see if making these changes influences the recruiting and retention problem. And then flexible shift options, we're all for this. We have our employees, all our employees work flexible shifts, I'd say. Back in the day, you know, when I started, you worked your 40 hours, and you worked eight days. You worked from 7:30 to 4:30, and that was it, and there was no other options. You do that today, you're going to have half your staff. They just will not work like that. And they have lots of options out there. So we're all for that. It gets complicated, though, when you're trying to do 24/7 scheduling. So we are looking at some software to be able to help with that. But again, all for that. Can we do a weekend shift? Can you do, you know, just work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, anything? It's all about the time and the people that you need in the seats to get those three people through the 24-hour shifts. So decompression room. So when this first came to my attention, or they talked about this, I've never heard of this before. Then I talked to my administrative group, and guess what? Lots of people are doing this. So this would really be a room that if there's a bad call, you know, something tough, that they can actually go and decompress. Obviously, they typically go from call to call to call. It also would be set up for, we have some employees working 18 hours, they're working 12-hour shifts, and then half of them another shift. Give them an opportunity to go in there and rest. We're concerned about them driving home, you know, we don't want that fatigue. So it'd be available for that. And again, it's something that I was surprised how many counties are actually doing that. And then the extended breaks is kind of the same thing. That's what we're talking about. If it's 2 o'clock in the morning, and there's nothing going on, and somebody's been on, they're on 14 hours, give them an opportunity to go in that decompression room and take some time. So hopefully, they can rest a little bit and be fresh. But they're there. Emergency happens, they literally can be back in the 911 center. Because as I hear in that, you know, in that world, it's, it can be boring for 90% of the time. The next 10% is, you know, nonstop and very, very high-stress jobs. But so, that's the idea behind that. And then any kind of morale, instead of just having them come, having their families come and see them on holidays and things like that, we're all for it. So, you know, it just takes a big toll on your family when you're working this time. I personally have witnessed this. My brother worked at Lincoln Hills for several years, and worked, every time he walked in the building, he worked 16-hour shifts. Well, that's pretty tough every time you do that. So that's kind of been known across the state. The state's stepped up and has done some things to try and relieve that staffing concerns. But again, very tough position to fill. But so that's really the reason behind it. Again, the resolution is to go from one full-time to two part-time.
Any questions? Supervisor Kelly?
No, thank you, Chair. It says you would like to have a 3% wage increase across the board for all telecommunicators, right?
Correct.
That's what our goal is. Like, so what's the minimum right now?
So there's, yeah. So our increases across the board increases, there's one in July of 3% for all our employees. This would be on top of that. So they'd get a 3% January 1, and then they'd get their 3% on July 1. That's what's currently in the budget.
So what's, so if, say I come in, no experience whatsoever, what would I be getting paid right now? Like, what is that, 24?
I have, I don't know. You'd have to ask. Tony might know.
24. So we're talking a 74 cent increase?
Whatever that is.
I don't think that's going to be very enticing, right?
We hope it is. We can't blow up our whole pay schedule for one position. Because if you do that, you got to start moving a whole bunch of other people. This is what we're able to do and still stop compression if you're dealing with a large-scale pay scale. You really got to watch out for those things. So again, if this doesn't work, it doesn't mean that we have to stop here or not do something in the future. But it was a way to still stay within our pay scale and give them an increase.
Who makes $100, some thousand dollars a year here?
I have no idea.
Somebody does, right? So 3% of $100,000, that's a lot of money.
Sure.
$24 is not a lot. What if we flipped it? Right?
Well, flipping.
Let's get the top earners 74 cents.
So I've heard this argument my entire career. Obviously, I'm the highest earner here. What you end up doing is having compression again. So you don't have people wanting to be supervisors because they're not making enough money to separate that division. That's why you do percentages.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shubridge?
These positions, are they needing specialty training to get these? It's just like to your degree or 40 degree, but try and get these people where they?
Sure. And Tammy can come up and talk on that if you want. If I speak, please tell me, Tammy. No, they don't need any experience at all. The problem, the tough thing is it's all on-the-job training. So they, a lot of times, from what I understand, they think they know what they're getting themselves into. And we've done things to have them come in and watch, observe. But they could come in on a time that's slow. They could come in at a time that, you know, maybe there is something that's happening, but you're not, if you're, I feel, I guess, if you're not on that council and you're the one doing all the work, it probably, they make it look easy, the ones that are experienced. They really know what they're doing. So no, there is no to your degree. There is no requirements for the position. But it is a very long, I don't know, is it 16 weeks?
It's a minimum of 12.
12 weeks?
Yeah.
12 weeks training on the job where, so that's another, that's a good point, though, because like when, even if we were fully staffed, let's say we had all our employees, and you had three employees that were still training, we wouldn't consider them operational because they either have to have somebody with them when they're training. So they're, it's really, they're not really, they're not able to do the position. So we wouldn't really consider that being staffed because they can't do the work without somebody else watching them.
So what are the programs or steps of looking for new recruits? You collect job fairs, colleges? I mean, what kind of?
Yes. Everything, everything you could imagine. Yep. Yeah, they've done. Our HR department does the same thing. We have other departments that go out and recruit, too. So they go everywhere they can for recruitments.
If I could, Administrator Schultz, quickly.
I don't, I can't call on you. It's the chair. It's up to the chair.
I was just going to attest to that.
I just, I just.
Yeah.
So just, Supervisor Shubridge, when we interview people, I've asked, and to HR's point, I think that a lot of it's come from Indeed. So when we look at like law enforcement candidates, when they come, you know, they hear about us through the tech school or from a law enforcement posting where there's jobs like WileyNet or governmental jobs. A lot of our dispatch candidates and our jail candidates have actually been coming from social media posts or from Indeed. One of the questions that I've been asking all of our interview candidates is where they heard about the job. And it's been surprising. A lot of them have said, well, I seen it posted on Indeed, and then I researched it. I thought it would be a unique opportunity. And so we're sure as standing out in front of the grocery store handing out flyers, we're trying everything.
Yep. And again, it's tough, I think. You know, they, again, think they know what they're getting into, and then they're left alone. I mean, they'll even go make it through training, and then they're on their own. And, you know, you get, I mean, they do some tough stuff, you know? So it's just a hard, hard, hard deal.
Supervisor Lotz?
Oh, so how many employees are there in the telecommunications center? How many are supposed to be there? How many do we have?
So you guys, if you guys got the up-to-date stuff, I got what's on the resolution. But you want to, you got to come up, though. I'm sorry, you're on video. So I apologize.
20 pounds.
Please introduce yourself for the camera.
Tammy Foley, I'm the 911 center director at the sheriff's office. We have 14 full-time positions. We are currently at six full-time staff that are trained. We have three in training right now. One of our full-time staff is deployed for a year. He's in the military and should be back, hopefully safely, in June. So he would come back and have a brief retraining because he had just got finished up on his training and then actually got deployed. So he'll come back for a little bit of a refresh, and then should be able to fill one of our spots. We are blessed with, Tony helped me on the LTEs, I keep forgetting because we keep adding them. I think five, five that were full-time dispatchers previously with us had life changes, family changes as far as adopting babies, having babies, things like that, but still wanted to work part-time for us. So we have five of them that are helping us fill shifts. So they're doing, thank goodness for them, and along with the others that are helping fill shifts. Otherwise, we would, our boat would have sunk a while ago. So, but they are working, some of them, that's one of the reasons for changing over to the two part-time positions from one of our full-time positions. We have 12, 12 of the We have 12, 12 of the staff that normally fill shifts, three on, three per shift for four different shifts, and then the extra two are supposed to be floaters, but we never get to that point. So we decided to take two of them and take one of those full-time spots, make two part-time spots to up those hours, because some of our LTEs are working close to 40 hours a week. The nice thing about them is they can pick their hours, so that's why they like the LTE status, so they can plan around their, their hours or their schedules, so. The other divisions?
Yeah.
Yep, we have one of our jailers, she's a sergeant in the jail, she came to us with the dispatch/jail experience from Taylor County, because they run dispatchers/jailers. So she came, she helps us fill shifts there as well. If she's working in the jail and scheduled, and someone wants to sign for her shift, she can come up and work in dispatch, or on her days off, she signs overtime with us. One of our investigators, who started in dispatch back in the Flintstone era, actually came back and is helping us fill shifts as well. And then our office manager at the Sheriff's Office, along with myself, are filling shifts in the center to help alleviate the burden on the full-time staff. So I think that that's everybody.
DHS.
Oh, yes, DHS and Clerk of Courts, two of the staff that used to be dispatchers and transferred over to those departments are coming back to help fill shifts as well. So we've got a little bit of the Brady Bunch, we got everybody, so it's a nice, it's nice, though, to have those people, because it helps, like I said, alleviate as much as we can of the burden on the full-time staff, so.
So what's a full-time day? A 12-hour shift or an 8-hour shift?
Depends on the day. 12 hours is what they are scheduled to work. Some of them are pulling 18-hour shifts, 16-hour shifts. Obviously, we don't like them, we wouldn't let them probably do a double unless it was life-or-death kind of thing, we'll deviate the shifts. I think one of our staff, I think, had 23, 24 shifts in a row with no days off. So that was by her choice, that wasn't that she was forced to do that by us, but that was by.
Keep getting an email, so I'm trying to figure out how we helped her see her boyfriend, her husband, if he's working 12-hour days, how many days a week?
It just depends on the employee, because when the, when the available shifts are posted, it goes to our LTEs first. The part-time people, they can pick from that, because obviously, it's cheaper for them to work than a full-time staff. The LTEs are not forced, those are only the shifts they volunteer for. We then put it out to usually the people, like if we can get the jail sergeant who can come up and they can post back there, because they don't have a lot of overtime right now, so she can come up and work with us, and then they post it, only if it's voluntary back there, we don't force them either. And then the full-time staff usually works together, because they know their schedules better than, than we do. If there's some type of conflict, or there's something like that, they'll, they'll voice it, and usually, like we have a weekend coming up in October, we've got day shifters working night shifts, we've got, I'm working a night shift, we've got some other people working different shifts, because there's a lot of people that need off that weekend for some reason. So we just work together, and if it's even a part of a shift or whatever. If they sign for it initially, that's not like the one that works 23 days in a row, that's on, you know, she signed those voluntarily. Sometimes we don't have a choice, we have to fill the shifts. I mean, we can't go short-staffed, because the wagon rollover at Bushel and Apec was, what, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock on a morning, you know, during the week. So it's not just weekends that are busy, or weekend nights that are busy. So unfortunately, we can't go short-staffed, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Some other things, too, that we're doing, working with the sheriff to talk about, regionalization, some counties are looking at that. Bayfield and Ashland County are currently, they did a study on that to make sure the technology works and all that kind of stuff. So we've reached out to Dunn County, we've reached out to, City of Clare is a little unique, because they have the dispatch, typically, it's a county, but maybe that's something long-term that can help or that can work. So everything, we're trying everything we can.
Any further questions? We'll call the vote then to vote on Resolution 41-24. Resolution's passed. Item 3 is Resolution 42-24, Resolution to disallow claim of Richard Hudson.
Resolution number 42-24, Resolution to disallow claim of Richard Hudson, Ozden. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby deny the claim of attorney Richard Hudson, and no action on this claim may be brought against Chippewa County or any of its offices, officials, agents, or employees after six months from the date of service of this notice pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 893.80. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the claimant by certified mail, return receipt requested as notice of disallowance forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
One more seconds.
We have a motion in a second to approve.
I got Jim Sherman here from the Corporation Council Office, he's going to go through this with you.
Anyone have any questions? This is like I told you back in August, this is a pretty standard motion, or resolution, rather. It'll deny the claim, it'll shorten the statute of limitations from three years down to six months. And if it's approved, then the notice will be sent out to the claimant and allow him six months to file his lawsuit. Really all it's, we're doing today.
Supervisor Lott?
Why do we want it to go to a law, for a lawsuit? Isn't that going to cost the county more money?
It's not that we want it to go to a lawsuit, it's his right to sue the county. He has to give the county notice that he intends to file a suit.
He did, didn't he, back in May or June, when it was letters sent?
June 12th, I think, is the date of the letter.
Okay.
So we have to do this by the 12, probably technically the 10th or 11th of October, so today's the 8th, and so it had to be within 120 days.
So, why, why did the insurance company pay for the Van Buren and Roper?
The insurance company did, and we did.
Right, why did they?
Because it was a potential claim.
Oh, so, so somebody being investigated isn't allowed to have representation?
Nobody ever said that.
Well, by not paying his invoices, that tells me that...
This is not a closed session, so I'm not going to go into the details of the case, this is not removing anybody's rights, okay? It's not removing anybody's rights, it's just shortening the timeframe for this, the suit. So we'll know within six months if we're going to get sued or not.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shubridge?
My apologies, I'm not here last month, but what is the real...
In August, in August. You were here in August?
That's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So you're, we're not paying this, the legal fees, for what reason?
Because, what's that?
We're not going to reimburse this, I mean, county employee?
I didn't say that, it's, go through the normal channels of filing a claim.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Nope.
Supervisor Sidlitz?
Who's that? Sidlitz, I'm sorry.
Whoever we want to speed up this case, because it seems like it would be putting the pressure on the sheriff's lawyer to have less time to put together a case against the county, which obviously, this whole county board has changed a lot of people over because of this court, this whole case against Travis, and it seems like we'd be unfair to his attorneys when we didn't supply him corporate counsel, because he was denied corporate counsel.
As I stated, in August, this is, the reason this went into place was because municipalities were getting routinely sued, and if you drag it out for three to six years, depending on the statute of limitations, then you never know if you're going to get sued or not, until it could be the last minute. All this does is shorten the timeframe, there's not a lot, there's, there's not a lot of difficult legal issues for Mr. Hudson to figure out. So it's not, he knew what he did, he wrote in his letter, he's, he's filing that as a notice of claim to protect his rights. So he knew what he was doing, it's not shortening anybody's time, he still knew what he was doing when he gave the notice of claim.
And I just want to remind everybody, this is why I do not like going into closed sessions, because this stuff is hid behind closed sessions, and I do not like going to closed sessions.
Supervisor Kelly?
The first letter was dated May 15th, right?
I believe so, I'm not sure.
It says that Mr. Hudson stated that a staff member in a court counsel would be receiving an email with the invoices. Was that email ever received?
I can't tell you offhand, I don't know.
Well, why don't we find out, we're ready, right?
What is the question?
Was the email, because you said you didn't know anything about it until June, this letter?
No, the June 12th was the date that he gave his formal notice of claim, is what I said. That's when he gave his formal notice of claim.
Why wouldn't we know anything about it? Like, the first letter was dated May 15th.
Which letter?
To Mr. Todd A. Paul, right?
Paul.
So we didn't know anything about it, that was May 15th?
May 15th?
Yep.
There is emails that were sent, there were letters sent, but they were letters from his attorney, I'm not sure what were in those letters.
That's not a notice of claim, a notice of claim has to go to the court.
I mean, we're talking $30,000, right? We, we're just going to just slide that, what, to the side, just be like, nah, this isn't that big of a deal, or?
If we were a closed session, I would tell you a lot more than I'm telling you right now, but because this is potential litigation, we don't count on litigation because of the reasons. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that I would tell you. This isn't removing anyone's rights, okay? This is not removing anyone's rights, it's just, if you don't vote for it, all it does is it drags it out for three years, and that's fine, you can vote to vote it down, that's fine. That's your prerogative. It's not taking anyone's rights away, understand that. He's, he still has a right to sue the county. And if you, we never brought this resolution, he would still have a right to sue the county.
Supervisor Sidlitz?
I think what Kelly's trying to ask is, is there a way of making a resolution to vote to pay for the bills, instead of having a resolution to just get sued for the bills? Because if we drag this out and they win a lawsuit, it's going to cost us a whole lot more money than the measly $25,000, it's going to cost a lot of money, being dragged out in courts, getting a change of venue, getting all kinds of different stuff going on, plus you're going to have interest, other fees, more lawyer fees. I mean, we're going to be tied up with our lawyer fees and everything in it, that's going to add up more than $24,000 or $25,000. But I think what he was asking, is there any way to have a resolution to vote on paying?
You can bring that, you can bring that at another county board meeting, you can certainly draft a resolution at another county board meeting to figure out where you're going to pay it from, and set the precedent that you're going to pay fees like that. That's a precedent you're setting, just realize that. That's the other reason we're bringing this resolution.
Supervisor Shubridge?
If I understand the wording right here, it isn't just shortening the time, but actually is a formal denying of the claim.
You're disallowing the notice of claim, that says, in the letter that he will receive will tell him that he needs to file something within six months of the date of the disallowance, which would be roughly February, I'm sorry, didn't do the math right, April 8th.
Any further questions or comments?
Thank you.
So we'll call the vote then on Resolution 42-24. Voting yes would be disallowing the claim. Release. Resolution as worded passes, 14 to 6. Item 9 is county board chair appointments, there are none. Item 10 is county administrator appointments. We have one for the Housing Authority Commission. Any questions on that, we'll entertain it, otherwise we can vote on.
Make a motion to approve Housing Authority Commission appointments.
Later, a second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the appointment. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Since I'm the one being appointed?
Yes.
Should I refrain from voting?
No, you can vote for yourself.
Go on to position?
Now for the election?
Tell us now.
Yep, okay, now we're ready.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I got it, that's all right. I just forgot to write it in.
Okay, then release. Okay, the appointment is approved. Congratulations. Item 11 is agenda items for future consideration, no field topics you'd like to discuss in the agenda. And item 12.
Erickson will make a motion to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn, we'll take the vote.